We're now recording and let me put it on the live stream.
Custom live, live stream.
Yeah, they just moved everything around.
Right.
I hate upgrades.
Every time I get an upgrade to my phone, I don't know where anything is.
Linda, are you familiar with what it should be under? I usually click the more with the dot, dot, dot.
That's correct. It should be still, it should still be there.
Uh, I do not see it as an option on my. Uh, do you mind checking to see if it's available on yours?
I'm looking right now. Now.
I wonder where Mark is.
Whereabouts unknown.
Linda, do you have Mark's contact information?
Uh, Mark Mitchell, one moment.
Can you try calling him and tell him we need him?
Sure. Oh geez. Okay, I'm just gonna meet myself one moment. I just tried the number on that uh he has on record and it came up as not being in service at this time.
And how about Pansy? Do we want to try her? Cause we do.
We need another, yes.
You need another person.
One moment.
Whatever number I had for Mark, I just called and got his voicemail.
Did you leave a message so that he can call back?
I did.
Okay.
I left a message to tell him that we could use them.
Okay.
Oh yeah, I did.
Is that Mark down there?
Oh, Mark, thank you.
Believe he's here. Welcome.
Welcome, Mark.
Thank.
Mark, do you, do you have the packet? Were you able to go through it?
You're on mute.
You're muted.
Looks like he's on vacation.
Lucky him. Looks like he's walking. We, you're still muted, Mark.
Okay, I just spoke with Pansy Archer and she said she never received the Zoom link, so um I don't know why, um, I'll check that tomorrow with her. Yeah, I just sent her the link.
Okay, that's, that's great. And if you know how to broadcast, I'm still trying to find it.
You're still trying to find what? Oh, that.
Uh, broadcast to YouTube. They moved where everything is.
Can I, can I talk or we have to wait for that?
I mean, I wouldn't start the meeting until that's going, if possible, um.
Well, I was gonna, I was just gonna introduce Rebecca. Start there, but I, I won't call it to order until you're ready.
Okay, I did get the packet.
And you did go over it?
Yes.
Alright, so I guess, I guess the question from Pansy is if does she feel she can do it or is she? Does she have a conflict?
Yeah, she should disclose it. And if we have five voting or five, five members that can vote, I mean, it would make sense to just go with whoever isn't in a butter if that's the case, but that, I mean, it's just up to her and you know, it's a good question for councils as well.
Are we on live stream yet or no?
No, the option's not showing up, which is a little.
So yeah, there, there is an option to live stream and it has to be approved by our admin, which is they're not here now. Um, it, I, I think we can move forward. That's a live stream option. If anybody wants to participate, they can obviously uh request to register. Um, a live stream, it's just if they wanted to view it, which is just um uh, an option, but it's not like a requirement, right?
And there's no public hearing tonight.
Yeah, yeah, there is. There is. But again, if they wanted to participate in the public hearing, they can register and that option is available to them. So I don't think that having the live stream, um you know, for anything, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, then I'm gonna call the zoning, the meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order uh seven thirty eight. Um, I just want to introduce it to you that we have a new um, a new recording secretary Rebecca Jones and she's there smiling at us. Come on, smile. Good.
Did you want to uh wait for uh Pan, uh Pansy Archer?
Uh, well, I was gonna have Shirley read the call of the meeting and then we can wait a minute.
Okay.
And say.
We do have five.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Shirley, uh, the secretary's gonna read the call of the meeting.
Okay, uh, this notice appeared in the Hartford Current May, Friday, May thirtieth, twenty twenty five and Friday, June sixth, twenty twenty five. Legal notice Town of Bloomfield uh zoning board of appeals. Notice is hereby given that the zoning board of appeals will hold its regular meeting virtually via Zoom on Monday, June ninth, twenty twenty five at seven thirty PM to conduct the following. Um, A is a continued de- um deliberation at sixty nine, four sixty nine Brown Street. Applicant owner Anthony Malucci, principal manager, Malucci Properties LLC. For the appeal of the November seventh, twenty twenty four cease and desist order. Uh, B is uh seventy nine Philly Street applicant Anthony Doom's weird owner Philip Cosby for a variance of the zoning regulations, section six point four point I point eight permit standards and conditions grading in section six point seven point eight point two point A retaining wall um setback. So to restore an excavated portion of his yard. Applications are available for review on the Town of Bloomfield website and at the land use office located at eight hundred Bloomfield Avenue, Bloomfield, Connecticut. Six, six zero six, oh, six zero zero two, Zoning Board of Appeals, Shirley P. Williams.
Okay.
Maybe take the role.
Okay, so um, well, I'm just gonna say who's here and that's the role. Um, for regular members, Jackie Isaacson's here, Shirley Williams is here. Mark um Mitchell is here. Um, Alan Bedkovsky is here. And Seth Pitts is not here. And I don't know what's that other guy's name, Moore?
Thomas Moore.
Thomas Moore is not here.
And Pansy Archer is here.
Right, right. And that's just gonna say, and we have two alternates here, Pansy Archer and Mark Mitchell. And um, I guess there was a question, Pansy, if since you were a neighbor, if you were gonna sit on this application? Or, or if uh you preferred to have Mark?
You could have Mark. Uh, um, you can have Mark.
That's, okay. And Mark, you're comfortable with that? You're there somewhere? You're hiding. Mark, you're, you're.
I am. I'm looking.
Okay, so then.
Hold on, we can have one more. You, to have five consecutive member, Pansy Archer would have to sit also as an alternate. As long as it.
We have five people.
Well, we have Jackie Isaacson, Shirley Williams, Mark Mitchell, Alan Beddowsky and Pansy Archer.
And Harvey Fryman.
Been voting on a few of these already.
Harvey Fryman.
Be a good kind of logical next.
I apologize. I didn't know Harvey was here.
I'm sorry. I might have missed him.
He is also an alternate as well. He just has been voting in the past.
So if he's an alternate, then.
He's an alternate and he's gonna be voting and Mark is not. Mark is a regular member.
Got it, got it.
So Harvey is the alternate that's voting. I'm sorry, I did say that wrong. Mark, I, it was, it was, it was either Pansy or Harvey. I, I messed that up. I'm sorry. Cause Mark is a regular member. He all, he always.
We sat on it last time, last meeting.
Alright, so, um. The first, so, so the first um thing that we need to do and since I don't really have an agenda in front of me, is we need to have a discussion among the board members on uh this cease and desist order and we have to vote on that tonight.
Sorry, point of order.
Yeah.
Point of order. The um, since you don't have a copy of the agenda, I apologize that it didn't get to you, but approval of minutes is first for the March third, twenty twenty five.
Right. March, I have April's here.
April, gotta be April.
I have April seventh.
Oops, I got the wrong agenda.
And, and I've asked if we can move that on the agenda. I think I've asked several times if you can move the minutes to down at the bottom so that when people are waiting, we don't have to have them sit there and wait through that.
Okay.
Okay, so, so do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April seventh, twenty twenty five?
Meeting? I move that we approve the minutes of the April seventh, twenty twenty five meeting.
I second.
That was Mark who seconded it?
Yes.
Alright. You're on. So there were no changes to it. Okay.
And then Jackie, I mean, I emailed you the agenda. It's literally just a blank email with just the agenda on it, so you.
Okay, alright. So the motion is Shirley. And Mark. A second. Okay, three minutes. Okay, so then let me, I'll pull it up on my phone so I don't have to do that. I, I got nothing as far as that second application also.
Yeah, sorry. I, I've been using the website. I know that it's a transition, so I'm gonna find a middle ground where people are aware of what's going on.
Okay, so we've done the roll call on approval of minutes. Okay.
What I would recommend is that you share your screen and perhaps um share your staff report and or application with the commission.
Okay, well, according to the agenda, the seventy nine Philly streets first.
Yeah, so we would have to do what we did last time where we moved that up.
Okay, so do I have a motion to continue the old business? And then do the public hearing so that we reverse these?
If that's what the commission would like, yes.
I mean, is that what the commission wants to do or do they want to just do do the Philly street first? It's up to you guys.
Well, I move we uh rearrange the agenda so that old business is number four. And public hearing is number five.
And do I have a second for that?
I second.
Nice.
Okay. And actually, Pansy can sit on, on the, on the second application because we try, we try to give everybody opportunities, so. Um, alright, so the.
It's making confusing in the minutes though. That's the only thing.
Just vote all in favor.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who was the second for that motion, please?
Well, I made the motion.
Oh, Shirley.
Shirley Williams.
Seconded it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so and there are no nays. So we're gonna go ahead with old business, which is the continued deliberation sixty nine Brown Street applicant owner Anthony Malucci. And this is for the cease and desist that was dated on the November seventh, twenty twenty four is what we're acting on now. First, so, um and I believe that the public hearing on this was closed.
Yes.
And so this is just to be discussed among the board members and voted. And we do need four votes.
Inseparable votes.
Inseparable. Um.
Eight, four and affirmative?
Affirmative votes. Or whatever. Okay, so does anybody want to speak first on this? Um. I, I have a couple of things, but I thought I'd let other people speak. Alright, well, I guess I'll start. I um I have read over this packet several times and I um don't see anything that um collaborates Mr. Malucci's um request. He doesn't live on the property, so we have an issue with um, if you look at the regulations of um, of having home occupations because he's not living there. And nobody, um, the bit, I guess the business, um any of the people in the Malucci business aren't living there in that house at sixty nine Brown Street that is a rented property. And going through all the land stuff that we were given, it doesn't have anywhere that it was commercial. So I, I don't see how we can grandfather something in if it wasn't, if it was never there on the land records. And personally, I think it's a bad precedent to do that because um my, my feeling is that that's a beautiful piece of residential property. And since anything we decide on is part of the property, that property gets sold and all of a sudden in the middle of that residential area, you're gonna have, you can have some commercial business. So that's, that's all I'm gonna say for now. Alan, go ahead.
Yeah, um, well, we're only uh, the cease and desist is only to the businesses, correct?
Correct.
Okay, alright, so my feeling is that Malucci Construction was there before back in the fifties. And I believe that Malucci construct, construction can stay there but all the other businesses can't. Um whether they can live with that or not, that's, you know, up to them, but Malucci construct, I believe Malucci Construction, it should be grandfathered in.
Sorry, point of clarification, um, the, the zoning, the cease and desist order wasn't just for businesses. It was for the principal uses and structures on the utilization of it as well.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Um, so the cease and desist order, your question was that if, if the cease and desist order was just based on the business, um, and I know that uh just uh to clarify, um, what Chair Isaacson mentioned and said, yes, it was based on the businesses, but the cease and desist order also pointed out the use of the, of one of the structures on the property as being a commercial structure.
Okay, yeah, I, um, he would have to follow.
It's, it's a garage, not a.
It's, it's.
Not a commercial structure, correct?
That's what it is built for.
He would have to follow all building code and uh zoning regulations for any addition to any of the buildings. Um, the lean to that's there that in question, I think should be removed within thirty days. Believing in, you know, just can, Malucci Construction.
Okay. I, I think the problem on, on that the violation is that the structure was put there as far as the town is concerned as a garage and not as a commercial building. And, and so I think Mr. Malucci mentions it several times as a shop rather than a garage. A garage goes with residential, a shop goes with something else. So, um I think it needs to, you know, we need to discuss it as a garage and not as, it shouldn't be a commercial building.
I refer into it as a garage for cars or for heavy equipment?
Well, it could have heavy equipment because I mean, there was, there was also farming being done here and, and you can have the, you can use that for the tractors and things like that.
Right, but the dump, the dump trucks and backhoes, those can go into the garage also?
Somewhere, there shouldn't be outside storage in a home business. So it would be, it would need to go in the garage. So you're, you're, you're happy with the one the one business still being there?
Malucci Construction period, yeah.
How about other, other discussion here?
Well, I felt that the um the property doesn't qualify as a home-based business because it goes against our regulations and um it, it, and I don't think that it can be grandfathered in because, and I do realize what you're saying about the property, Malucci having a construction business there since the nineteen fifties. But I don't think it can be the grandfathered in because our records don't uh, um approve it as a commercial use, so it, to me, it's kind of in limbo and I would rather support the cease and desist.
So, so there's never been any approval for that construction company to operate there?
Correct.
No. Not from what I read, no.
Uh, from what I read and not from what taxes are being paid. It's being.
Yeah, and the, and the taxes haven't been paid.
Yeah.
And, and the owner doesn't live there, so.
Owner doesn't live there, so you can't have a home business if you don't have the owner living on the property.
Yeah, I mean, were, were home-based businesses, was that a regulation in the fifties? I mean, I don't think there, you know, there were probably only two thousand people in town at that time. Did they have a home-based business then? That's something that came about, you know, more in the seventies. I, I don't really think that was there in the fifties.
Yeah, but I think in the fifties, they probably lived there.
Yeah.
And they worked a farm.
Right.
Right.
Um, where, where now he, he doesn't live there and he's not working a farm. He's got a totally different business going on there.
But. And, and once it came about, why didn't he apply for it?
In the fifties, it was a construction business.
Right. And there's no, there's no family members currently uh at that residence or on the property? Cause I know there's a couple of different homes.
The other home is on, it was subdivided. That, I was going that way myself.
Yeah.
Cause there is somebody, um, a family member, Ben Malucci.
Ben, yes.
At the other address, but back in let me see if I can find it. Back sometime quite a while ago, seventy three Brown and sixty nine Brown were subdivided, so it's not, it's not considered the same.
On property, okay.
And, and, and when Malucci Anthony bought it, it was bought as an LLC, not as a residence. Harvey, you've listened to this whole thing. What, you have some thoughts here?
My thoughts are maybe because I lived in Bloomfield for seventy years. And I remember all these names and back seventy years ago, there were no things written down or and a handshake and nothing in town hall was written down because you knew these people. And so that's why there probably are no records, no records.
But he hasn't paid taxes in seventy years on a business.
That's a difference.
That's very important. Why was Sydney paying taxes? Why is it in the records?
It's like Don Evans. How did Don Evans, you know, get used car permit? Eh, go ahead. It's alright. Put a few cars on the lot.
What it was, you know? Done with the handshake. Go ahead and do it.
Correct, but once we make this a commercial property, it will always be a commercial property.
When, I, I don't think we're making it a commercial property. I think we're allowing Malucci Construction to continue there.
And only Malucci Construction.
Only move Malucci Construction. None of those other businesses can be there.
How does everybody feel about that?
That's their problem.
People agree with Alan on that? I mean, we, we need four people to agree.
Oh, us, yeah. I mean, I thought you meant Malucci. I mean, I mean, that's the only thing in.
No, it's just us, so, you know, for us to, to vote and, and to have a consensus, we need four of us, four of the five of us that are voting to, to agree on, on on which way we want to go.
I, I don't agree. I, I still support the cease and desist. I mean, I, I do realize that yes, business probably was done with a handshake back then, but the taxes haven't been paid and somewhere along the line there should have been some kind of record filed with, maybe not in the fifties, but somewhere between there and now.
Yeah, I think, I think.
There should have been some records.
I mean, the subdivision was done in the seventies, maybe? I don't know exactly when. I don't know when the subdivision, when, when those two have, those two properties.
Yeah.
But it was, it was definitely not in the fifties. I, I actually agree with you, Shirley. So um but I, I understand what Harvey and, and Alan, their comments, so maybe we uphold the cease and desist and somehow or modify it?
Can they, is there a way for them to um if we uphold the cease and desist, um, can Mr. Malucci go to the town hall and file whatever he needs to file to make it um, something just for the, a commercial, just for his, his construction business only and not for all these other businesses? And, and can the taxes be? I'm sorry.
Only as a home occupation, um, without external evidence.
Yeah.
Home occupation, you must live on the property.
He must live, okay, that's the big deal too.
That's, that's, that's.
And that's in any, that's in any residential zone and it's in your package.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And he's not living on the property.
No. No, he's not.
No, he's not.
That's what's making this so difficult.
We can uphold the, uh, cease and desist with the exception of Malucci Construction. If that's what people wanna do, and he's also gotta follow all building codes and, you know, uh, other zoning, but.
Yeah, but it's still not a home-based business because he's not living there.
Well, I, my personal feeling is that it was a, it was a business there before that term even was invented, so, you know.
Yes, but if it was a home. So you're, you're saying because it was.
I'm saying that the home-based business didn't exist when they were started there.
But to me, it seems like, um, the homework wasn't done by the Malucci family. If, if they claim that this is a home-based business, first of all, I, I really think someone should be living there, but if we're going to, um, go with just the construction business piece, um, the, the, the legal part of it hasn't been taken care of, like, you haven't gone to the Town Hall and filed whatever you needed to file, whatever paperwork you needed to file there. Um, the taxes haven't been paid, so it's just like you've been operating, but you've been operating without the, the, the legal structure underneath it, to support it.
Well, you know, the, the, the hidden problem in all this is that the town has the authority to sell, to put tax liens on the property for all those open tax bills and sell them. And then somebody will come along and demand payment with attorney's fees and foreclosing fees and it'll escalate and it'll be a big problem for them if they don't take care of that.
But do they, do they have an open tax bill on it though? It seems like they've been operating under Malucci Construction and may not have been taxed on that.
They were not taxed on that, they were taxed on residence.
The other businesses, but still on that address. I mean, the big, I think the big problem with the Maluchis is that they didn't hire a lawyer. They really should have gotten a lawyer.
Well, that's done, so. If we uphold the cease and desist order, they will have time to hire an attorney if they, if they so wanna continue.
If we hi, if we uphold the cease and desist, does that take care of the building?
Well, the cease and desist order, e- everybody should have that, that's attached to his original. Um, application. Um, and it says, you, so the nature of the violation is utilizing an accessory structure, a garage, as a commercial building and operating multiple commercial businesses within, within their, uh, property and structure without any previous land use approvals. Now, Kenzie, if you wanna, if you have any thoughts, even though you're not voting, I, I, you can, you know, if you feel like there's something that we're missing here that you wanna contribute to the discussion, that you are, you are welcome to do that.
My only thought is, I didn't like the idea, say, I mean, the place was a farm at first, they now have two beautiful homes on there. Um, it's no longer a farm, but why did they go ahead and it's a brick building that they live, that it's rented, so why did they add on, who gave them permission to add on that garage piece?
When did the garage come into being, can you tell us?
I don't, it's like in the back and it's not a brick, it's not brick, it's just.
Wood construction.
It's just wood or.
I mean, there's also a stable there, but that stable's been there for quite a while too.
Well, the stable is there, I mean, usually be two, that's fine, it was there, there's nothing you can do that was there. But it's just the wood construction that they added on in order to continue to do a bigger business.
You mean the overhang?
Yes, I mean.
Yeah, that's a contention, the building department has been fighting with him on that too, he's in violations and they're gonna take care of that one way or the other. I mean, he's gotta follow building codes. That's the one, is that the one he got arrested for?
No idea.
That's a long story.
Yeah, I mean, from the, the, one of the maps, the, the second, the Google Earth map, that's the second Google Earth map, you can see that the structures. The garage was put there legally, the garage itself, right?
Right, it's the, it's the, uh, can, it's the, uh, overhang, it's in contention with the building department, I believe. No permits on that.
Okay, alright, so, um, either way, I think I want to, um, entertain a motion, if you're ready, to uphold the zoning enforcement officers cease and desist and see where we get with that.
You mean, the, the way it was.
We have to get somewhere tonight because today's the last day, it's sixty-five days.
Uh, I'll, you know, uh, Jackie, maybe, um, if it's alright with you, we can vote to uphold the, uh, cease and desist and I'll make an amendment to exempt Malucci Construction and see if that passes. And then if that doesn't pass, is then you still have the cease and desist. How's that sound?
Yeah, you could definitely can do that, would you like, would you like to make a motion?
Well, that would be a motion to modify the order, not, not uphold it and then amend it.
No, we're gonna.
Just point of order, that's all.
We're gonna amend it after the motion has been made to, to keep it in place.
No, what she's saying is you're gonna modify.
Which you can do, you can, you can modify.
You can, okay, sorry, point of order here, you can, there, there are three ways you can vote on this. You can uphold the cease and desist, you can modify the order or, um, you can lift the order or overturn it. Um, that, those are the three ways you, you can, you can vote, and then for each one, you have to give a reason why. So if you're gonna uphold it, your reasons for upholding it, if you're gonna modify the order, as you mentioned, you can, um, modify the order or, you know, um, you can uh, lift the order or you could say overturn it, uh, whichever.
So I, I think, I think what Linda is saying that if you wanna try to make a motion, Alan, as a modify, which is, and see if that's gonna pass and if somebody's gonna second that.
We could do it that way, I, I, I disagree.
I mean, that's the way you wanna go.
Yeah, I think according to Robert's rules, you can make an amendment on any motion, but we'll go, we, we can go his way.
Alright, so, so what's your motion, Alan?
My motion would be to uphold the cease and desist and modify it to allow Malucci Construction only. Remain in operation there.
And do I have a second for that?
I'll second that.
That was Harvey who seconded that, okay, alright, and all in favor of that motion? I have two ayes, uh, Shirley?
No.
Okay, Mark?
Uh, I'm gonna have to say no.
Okay, so the motion is defeated.
How did the chair vote?
I voted, I voted against it. Sorry.
It's alright.
Let's try again.
Okay, so we have to try again with another motion.
Alright, so I make a motion to uphold the cease and desist on sixty-nine Brown Street. Um, Malucci Properties LLC, um, as described in the cease and desist order.
And do I have a second for that?
I second that.
Okay.
Please, so let's go with Shirley. Okay, and all in favor of that motion? Let me just make sure, I heard a Mark, I, I heard an Alan. Harvey? Shirley, I. I meant I.
Rebecca, you got all this?
So that, that motion is, um, five to zero. In favor of, of upholding the zoning enforcement officer cease and desist. Okay. Alright, anything?
Yeah, and if he doesn't like that, then he can get a lawyer, we can go to court and.
Okay, so, um, that's it for that, we go on to the Philly seventy-nine Philly Street, let me get my.
Do we have any documentation on that, is that in, on the website?
I did not get this at all.
I didn't get it either.
I'm sorry, I know you guys are used to, um, I guess getting it via email.
Um, quick question for you guys, do you want me to stay on for the seventy-nine Philly Street variance? Or was it just for the, um, the Malucci matter?
Malucci, you're, you're the attorney, right? Yeah, yeah, no, that was it.
Okay, great.
I, so.
Unless you wanna stay, um, Ashley, it's, it's a variance, um, it, it's another one. Normally, in, in the past and, and previous practices, we've always had a representative from, from council on, on our meetings whenever there was.
We have not.
You have not?
Been doing this for forty years and we have not.
My, my past practice is in other municipalities, so my, I, I apologize, okay.
Only in appeals, only in appeals.
That, that's been our understanding for Bloomsfield. I just wanted to ask to see if I was needed for the Philly Park, I'm, I'm happy to stay on if needed.
I guess not, okay.
Alright, well, everyone have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Take care.
Why don't we listen to this application and if we're having issues because a lot of us are not familiar with it, we can.
Can continue it.
We can continue it, but why don't we have the applicant come in, tell us what they wanna do, ask our questions and if we're comfortable with everything, we'll vote on it tonight. If we're not comfortable, we'll have to continue it, does that sound okay to everybody?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, is the applicant here? I mean, can they come?
We haven't let him in yet, but I assume.
Okay, he's, okay, in the waiting room, alright.
I assume he's in the waiting room.
Well, do we have any idea what it's about before we bring him on?
Yeah, there's a staff report, I'll do a fairly, I'll do a more lengthy presentation.
Okay, alright.
You know, it makes sense, if you guys feel like you need more time with the materials, we can always continue it.
Okay, but if you're gonna give a presentation.
Alex, just so you know, that sometimes we like to drive by these properties too.
Yes, no, there's still time too, I mean, you can always, um.
What, go now?
We're right out there, Alan, for us.
I'll call it in.
So what are we doing? Well, he's, he's promoting, he's promoting.
I see Philip, I don't see his engineer, let me, uh, by seeing if he has anything to say to clarify, oh no, they're both at, no, they're, they're both together, hold on. I just asked him to unmute.
And turn on the camera if they can, please.
Hi Phil.
Hello.
Hi Phil, can you put your camera on so we see that there's a person?
I wouldn't even know how to do that.
There should be a little icon at the bottom of the screen of a picture of a camera.
Yeah, it should be right next to audio.
I don't know if it'll help if I promote him, I am still getting used to this system.
Yeah, that would help.
Yeah, to a pat, yeah. That might be the reason.
Yeah, Linda, do you mind trying that as well? I'm clicking it and I don't see anything changing.
You're clicking on what, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, no, it, it happened, I promoted him to a panelist, it just took a while to go through. Okay, I do see a video option now, so Phil, if you don't mind relooking, um, you should have an option to do video now.
There you go, okay, but now you're, you're still, now you're muted. So unmute yourself, okay. So, um, Philip, if you'll give your name and address for the record and, um, and did you wanna go first, Alex, and tell us about it, or do you want him to give his?
I mean, I wouldn't mind, I mean, I've usually seen the applicants go first, but there's been a lot of suspense and lack of materials, so. If that's within convention, I'll just share my screen and go through the materials.
Okay, why don't you do that and then Philip will introduce himself and we'll go from there.
Okay, so can you all see the website?
Yes.
Alright, um, not the purpose of this, I'm just gonna go through it, but this is where, um, the materials will be in the future, I'll share a fresh link every time. Um, so I'm actually gonna go in reverse order because that's, that's basically the uh, the most recent, uh, this materials. So this is my staff report from June. So the, the purpose of this variance is, uh, five, or the, the variance is for, uh, five point five foot reduction of the retaining wall setback, which in his district is basically half the setback. So our regulations currently require retaining walls to be within half, half of the required setback. Um, I'm gonna, as per usual, I am going to let them describe their hardship. Um, current conditions are an open face of soil, uh, when the house was constructed, the as-built includes what I can only assume are natural grades, um, this predates the current owner, uh, that wouldn't meet our current zoning regulations, there's currently an open face of soil that the homeowner is trying to close up and or find an appropriate grading for. If he restored it to the natural grading, he would need a variance for it, he would like to put up a retaining wall. Um, his, him and his engineer are present and there's a number of materials that he's submitted. Uh, so in terms of my overall comments, um, you know, they would need a variance to do the original grading that was there, uh, he did, um, you know, as, as is to be expected, you know, he wasn't familiar with some of the processes, so his application includes some additional information like a patio um, and a shed and, and things that aren't really related to this variance. This variance is for the retaining wall to be seven feet away from all property boundaries and that's essentially what we're trying to figure out if there's sufficient hardship and, and it's a reasonable request. Uh, so that, that's it in a nutshell, but it would be the most helpful to show you the plans. So this is his house, where you see the wall illustrated.
House is where, can you go with that? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so this is the footprint of the house, this is the driveway. Um, where you see this, this symbology for a retaining wall, this is currently. This is currently an open face of soil and it's been that way for, to my knowledge, at least two years, um, I, I haven't worked at the town of Bloomfield for. Nearly any, any of that time and it may be older, uh, to be honest, I don't know, but he would like to put a retaining wall. Where that currently is. So he's, you know, he's sent his letters out to a butters, there's, there's a residence here, a residence here, this is a town-owned parcel. Oh, look at that, the lights are back on. Um, so this is essentially, uh, wetlands and a drainage feature for the roads, so that's his northern a butter. Um, southern, eastern and western are all residential. So this.
So what's this grayed out area, right? Right, where he wants to put the retaining wall up to, up to there?
Uh, let me zoom in, so as I had mentioned in.
Where, where your cursor is now?
Yeah, there's, there's additional, there's additional things on the plan that aren't relevant to the variance. Uh, including, this is a stone patio.
Okay.
To be honest, that's not relevant, in terms of what we're evaluating, is just this setback right here. So this, this seven feet to the wall. As well as this seven feet to the wall, so it's a uniform seven foot buffer, that's, that's essentially the only thing that we're, we're voting on, the, the rest. There's, I'll show you the next exhibit, um, you know, there's comments from the engineering. And preliminary building review, um, just in terms of construction, things like that. For me, it's more of a proof of concept, just to show, hey, we could put a wall here, close this up, and it would meet. You know, with minor modifications can, can work. So let me pull up that exhibit. So this is the survey, um, you know, there's been feedback from the town in terms of what he should include in the location survey, um. This was his first plan, so one of the reasons why I've been kind of waiting to send out the materials is there has been this back and forth. Um, you know, why I dated the staff report, June is, that staff report was done in June, so, you know, that was about a week ago. Um, you know, I've been updating this as we go along, so feel free to take all the time you need to evaluate this. But their original plan was to just close up the open face entirely. And that would put them very close to the property boundary, you know, with all of the feedback, um, from engineering essentially. Uh, I think it makes more sense to just do a consistent seven foot buffer and the applicant has agreed. So, from their original plans, you know, they've been given a number of, of feedback related to their construction, which they're working on.
And then, so, so what you're saying is from the staff perspective or the town, you, you think this is a good thing?
Yeah, I mean, in terms of current condi- or. Conditions dating back years, it just makes sense to me to allow them to close that up. You know, there's still a seven foot buffer, they've notified all their neighbors, they've had a surveyor look at this, they've had an engineer look at this. They've had staff look at this. Um, you know, in terms of just doing the due diligence and getting it done, it makes sense to me. But they would need a variance to be closer than half the, half the required, um, yard setback.
Well.
Go ahead, Mark.
What's the footage that would, what's the footage that would make it in compliance? What, what's the total, uh?
Yeah, it, it would need to be twelve and a half feet from the rear yard. And it would be seven, so it's a five and a half foot reduction.
Okay, okay.
Alright, um.
And then, I'm just gonna, for, just for the record, I'm gonna go through all the exhibits. You know.
Can you stay on that one?
Yeah, of course.
So there's a retention pond there, right?
Yep, that's the town-owned parcel, which is the abutting property to the north.
Okay, and how close is this project to this retaining wall to that?
So let me go to your, um, the plans that we're reviewing. It would be seven feet to the property boundary and I would need to break out a scale, maybe the engineer knows in terms of. Essentially where the retaining wall is to, although you could kind of almost trace this setback. So very just general, um, it would be at least twenty-five feet just to this line right here.
So has Peter seen this?
Peter consolidating?
Yeah.
Yeah, so he, he provided the original comments and that's, that was one of my decision-making factors in asking the applicant to just make it a consistent seven foot buffer. Uh, you know, in terms of our approval, I don't need to reference a plan, so they're not married to something where they're missing. You know, just certain construction elements in terms of, um, I don't know if it was geofabric or whatever else, that's just based on my. I used to inspect retaining walls, um. So, so yeah, this, this is just to be seven feet away. And Peter's working with them, I believe. I'm gonna ask the applicant, I don't know off the top of my head whether they have an application into wetlands or not. Um, you know, it'd be premature to do a zoning or building permit, but, um, I know that Peter's at least reviewing this.
Okay, so he's involved in it?
Yeah, he provided the comments on, on the exhibit and, you know, was a deciding factor for me at least. In terms of saying, let's just do a seven foot consistent buffer to any property line.
Okay. Alright.
So these are all his notes.
The red is all Peter's notes?
Yeah, it's mostly notation.
Okay.
So things about the invert, cause there's an existing draining system, um, you know, just better notation essentially.
Alright, there were other, there were other documents you wanted to show us?
Yeah, just for the record, I'm gonna just, I included their property card, you know, I just like to do that, I think with anything involving a public hearing, it's good to just have that on the record. This was my previous staff report, so this is based on the materials before Peter's kind of preliminary review. So that's with the diagram, with the markup, before the markup, so it's the same staff report, but, uh, the difference is the motion. Uh, so the original, the original motion and. I guess variance i- is for a modification of six, seven, B two A, I added the seven feet. Cause we're, instead of referring to a, a construction diagram that's. You know, in the works, we're just going to call it seven feet and they're just gonna have to work with that buffer. I think that's a, a more streamlined way to do this. So the next exhibit is just the as-built to show the grading, um. So it's, it's, there were very steep slopes over here and to some extent they currently are, it's just an open face. That's all that is intended to do, I requested them have a licensed surveyor, you know, provide a survey, so that's this exhibit. Uh, and this is their original. This was their original plan before it was marked up. And this is their application, and I, I note, I make a note of it in old staff reports. There's additional materials here that are not being considered, such as the patio, um. But I said, that's, that's my take on the application. They provide useful information, like if you wanna see the product that they wanna put in, you know, you can review their materials. Just note, it does not include a shed or a patio, this is simply the seven foot buffer. Okay, and then with that, um, if the applicant would like to state their hardship and anything else, uh, I will leave that up to them.
Okay, actually, can you state your name and address before?
Yeah.
Record and then tell us. Your hardship or what else you wanna tell us?
Okay, Philip Crosby, seventy-nine Philly Street. Bloomfield, Connecticut.
Okay.
Zero six, zero, zero, two. Um. My hardship is that, um. There's wa- water that puddles in, in the yard. And so then it was brought to my attention through the landscaper, that if I put up a retaining wall, it would divert. Some of the water, so therefore I wouldn't have a pond in my backyard for a few days after every rain, rainstorm.
Alright, and is the engine, does the engineer have anything they wanna add? Just give us your name also for the record.
Yeah, my name is Anthony Dormard, I work with tunnel engineering. My name Phil has granddaughters and.
I can't, I can't hear him. I can't hear you.
Yeah, I, I actually have a couple points really quick, um. The applicant, you know, that might be their motivation to the project, but it, it might be simpler for them to just read what they, what they applied for. They had a pretty extensive hardship listed, I mean. Or, I wouldn't say extensive, but, um, maybe a little bit wordy, but I think.
Existing slope?
Yeah, in terms of the definition of a hardship, it probably makes more sense for them to just read what they put in their application.
Okay, I'm looking for it.
Yeah, I mean, it is up on the screen.
It is up on the screen.
So this is what you submitted.
That's too small.
Okay, can any, can you make that any bigger, by the way?
Yeah, I can zoom in.
Okay, there you go, okay, so, do you want us to read that, Peter, or, or do you wanna read it? I'm sorry?
So yeah, Philip, if you could just read that, or actually technically it's tone.
I'm sorry, Philip.
The existing slope in the vicinity of the proposed retaining wall slopes at a rate of. Three. Three verticals to five horizontal, which is very steep. Flattening the slope would encroach upon the patio area. While the retaining wall provides more usable area. Mister Crosby learned that the slope. Wall was steepened.
Steepened?
Was steepened on seventy-nine Philly Street by a previous owner. Of one Lawrence and Ridge adjacent to proposed wall, thereby making their property look more gently. Uh, and that's, and we've included in an area of photo, of whom we think that were pre-placed.
Okay. Alright. Um. Is this gonna have to go, is this, is this gonna go to wetlands either way?
Yeah, I mean, so this, this is upstream of everything, the, the only thing that we're trying to figure out, if seven foot is an adequate buffer. Um, you know, they've notified neighbors, they've hired.
Have any neighbors here?
Other than technically the town, uh, I do not believe so, we can check.
There, there's nobody in the waiting room. That, that's, uh, that's a butter that wants to speak.
Did we get anything in writing, letters of support or of opposition, Alex?
No, no letters either way. I do see one attendee, um, Arnel Hines, uh. If you have anything to say, please unmute your microphone if that's the purpose why you're attending. Other than that, everyone else is already a panelist.
Okay, just so, so, so is there a person?
Everybody, this is, this is Arnel Hines, I'm the neighbor at one Lawrence and Ridge.
Oh, thank you, okay.
Yes, and I have no problems, uh, with, um, this, Phil, Philip and I have talked. Um, over the years since he was thinking about doing this and he told me that, um, this meeting was gonna take place, so we've been very, uh, he's been very communicative. And, um, you know, I think again, that's, I, I have no problem with the construction project at all, my wife and I, I don't have any issue with that.
Yeah, and are you the abutting property, so you basically, it's, it's your yard and his yard where all this is taking place?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
They were, they were trees, just for history's sake, I don't know if you guys know this, but the former, um, resident at, at Philip's residence, um. There were, there were pine trees, large pine trees that he wanted to remove, I think there were about seven of them. Um, he removed four of them and I told him, well, I'll just do the other three, and, uh, that was just something that he, he wanted to do, and I, I'm assuming he got. You know, the, the various permits and things like that, I, you know, so, those are ju- there were trees just kind of blocking or. You know, bordering the property.
Yeah, we're, we're just trying to figure out, you know, where to go from here.
Yeah.
Alright, well, I appreciate you speaking up and, and just, uh, there is nobody else in the waiting room, is that correct, Alex?
Yes, Ar- Arnel was the only person, uh, and it makes sense, he's, he's the closest to this project.
Okay. Do any of the board members have any questions of anybody? Alan, you're muted right now.
Now, one question, was the retaining wall really gonna solve the water problem?
It would divert it?
Yeah, so there's, there's drainage features in retaining walls for safety. Um, I know I didn't give you guys a, a, a format that you're familiar with, so you didn't have any time to, to review it, but there's drainage features associated with the retaining wall. So the water would essentially be fed into a, a storm line that would divert the water.
And, and how, how high would the, the retaining wall be?
Uh, that's a good question for the engineer.
At five? Five and a half feet, okay. Anybody else? Where, where, did we lose it? Alan?
No, I'm good.
No, he's.
Oh, you're there, okay. Okay. Is any? I think this is pretty straightforward, I think it's something, I'm sorry. I, I think it's pretty straightforward and it's something that I, uh. Feel that we can vote on if other people feel that they can vote on it, especially knowing that. That wetlands is also gonna be overlooking this, uh, as well. Um. So I just wanted to see if anybody had any other questions for either Alex or for. The applicant, and if not, we could close the public hearing and, and, uh, discuss it among the board members. So everybody's good, I don't see any hands, one, two, three, four. Did we lose Shirley?
I'm, I'm here, I'm here.
Okay, it's only, they're not, you're not all showing up on my thing, I'm sorry, okay, okay. So then, um, I, and Alex, you have nothing else to add, correct?
No, I, I think this summarizes it as thoroughly.
Can you, um, can you put back the hardship there for us? So if we decide we wanna vote, we have.
The hardship or the motion?
No. Okay. Alright, so I'm closing the public hearing, um, do people feel comfortable voting on this tonight? Or do you feel you need to continue it?
That's right.
I heard a let's vote, so everybody's all set?
Yeah.
Okay, so who wants to make a motion here, so I guess. Okay.
I will make a motion to. Grant the variance as requested at seventy-nine Philly Street, Bloomfield, Connecticut. As follows. A variance of the zoning regulation section six, seven, B, two, A. Five and a half foot reduction of a retaining wall setback. In section six, four. What is that, I eight?
I think so.
Permission, standards and conditions grading table.
I second it.
Okay, Harvey seconded it. Okay, and, uh. And the hardship being? We usually do list that.
Yeah, I mean, it's usually stated more so by the applicant, but just the, the former topography, the, the work done not by the owner. And just the need to close the open face, and you'd need a variance regardless of, of whatever solution is proposed.
Does everybody agree with that, the maker of the motion and the seconder?
That's good.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor of the motion? Okay, I. So did everybody vote? Did we get five eyes? I'm sorry, Rebecca?
Who's second in that?
Harvey.
Harvey Fryman. Okay. So that, that is all set, that. So that that is all set, that was that passed. And do we have any new business?
No.
Alright, before we adjourn, I, Alex, I think what we're saying is that we we want paper hard copies of these.
Yeah, yeah, it's tough cuz information comes as. You know, as time goes on, but I'll I'll just send them out periodically, so. You know, you'll get several revisions as would have been the case per this, but that doesn't mean I can't, you know, mail them out, uh, as.
Okay.
I appreciate it, I'm getting old, I like.
Yeah, no problem.
See, I think that the difference in the past was that they would just bring it to the meeting and we'd get it. That way.
Right.
Alright, so. Uh, we're all in agreement that we want that, the the paper copies. Okay, so I'll, a motion to adjourn?
I.
A motion to adjourn.
A motion, thank you, a second to that.
Second.
Okay, alright, everybody, okay.
Good night, everybody.
Okay, good night.
Good night.